Good evening, everyone. Calling to order and announcing a quorum is present for the Planning and Zoning Commissioner Regular Meeting for November the 12th, 2025 at 6:33 PM. Public comments, non-agenda items. Public comments, white card. Comments will be taken from the audience on non-agenda related topics for the length of time not to exceed three minutes per person. Agenda item, public comments, yellow card. Comments will be taken from the audience on non-agenda and agenda items combined for the length of time not to exceed five minutes total per person on any items except for public hearing. Comments on public hearing items will be made when items come before the Board Commission Committee and not to exceed two minutes per person. Non, act, not, no action or discussion may be taken by the Board Commission Committee during the public comments on non-items. To address the Board Commission Committee, please complete the white or yellow card and present it to the city staff designated prior to the meeting. We have one non-agenda item, Mr. Robert Battle, is that correct? Would you keep the time?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I do have a Facebook page called, a group page called Mainor Community Coalition. I would invite everyone to go check that out. I also tried to send you guys some pictures of a few things and in my mind, committee members should be able to have their own email address and if a citizen wants to email them, they should email them. What is so hard about that? I offered to give you guys in every committee and commission in town, a free one, but that would, I guess, just be too embarrassing. Okay, now let's, let's talk just briefly about the way that the city of Mainor got bamboozled about Mainor Downs and you guys, I think, left out a very important step. Forty-six acres got deannexed out of the ETJ of Austin and into the 160 or 130 or so that Mainor Downs already had. When that property comes in, that's the end of phase one. It's not tied to any warehouse building. It's just, that's it. That's the moment at which we should have gotten the comprehensive plan to expand out into that new area. I mean, this is just basic city planning 101. Cause if you look at the comprehensive plan, all along Gilliland Creek, there's a giant greenbelt. It doesn't just stop at Dalphin. It goes all the way up the creek. I mean, that's just obvious. Now also, it's in the codes that we have to protect these trees. When healthy native trees are located in the buffer yard, existing trees and shrubs shall not be removed or replaced with new plantings. And I sent you guys pictures of giant groves of trees. Within parking lot, trees become focal points, moving the site plans rather than the trees themselves. They gave us a, a, a plan that's just like six boxes. And utter fall derise that our city staff just totally drank the Kool-Aid and it's gonna pay them eight and a half million dollars to come destroy Mainor Downs? And turn that into a warehouse park for robots? We have a warehouse park. It's right out toward Elgin. You guys know this. It's called Mainor Commercial Park. Everything has to be a park. Yeah, right. Um, anyway, there's plenty of room for them out there. That's where the boxes for the future robots go. They don't go out here next to our beautiful stadium from the past and then these people actually, they think preserving your history is putting Mainor Downs on the front door of a warehouse? I don't call that protecting history. That's five minutes? Was that, was that, was that supposed to mean?
Ten seconds.
Yeah. What, what's that mean?
Ten seconds.
Ten seconds?
Yes, sorry.
How about a timer light that costs 200 bucks? This town can't even afford a timer light. Pardon me for raising my voice. That's called remonstrance. That's my freedom of speech. That's in the, that's protected in the state bill of rights. It's Article 27, I believe, in the state bill of rights. So I get to talk loud. I get to be outrageous. Cause I am so disgusted by the amount of destruction going on in this town. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Moving on. Public hearing, conduct a public hearing on rezoning application for one lot on 2.78 acres more or less and being TCAP personnel 236902, also known as 12725 US Highway 290, Mainor, Texas, from agriculture to N1 light industrial. Commissioners, we do have Mr. John Sumlinson. He's here for any questions or anything.
Yes, Commission, this item is a rezoning for the property just behind ASCO Construction Equipment, if you're familiar with the property. Uh, per the future land use map, this area is actually designated as mixed density neighborhood, but with the development that currently goes on around it, the addition of the fire department being constructed in the area, just the general trend of that specific patch. It doesn't necessarily make sense to have a mixed density neighborhood behind two commercial equipment dealers. So staff is recommending an actual zoning of C3 heavy commercial with stipulations kind of limiting the uses that are there to give the opportunity to allow for a more community oriented service there, be it retail or technical school, things of that nature, but also appealing to the desire of the applicant.
Do we have any questions, Commissioners?
On the aerial image, the zoning map where New Katy Lane is, that is ETJ? Or is that institutional small? I believe it's ETJ, correct?
Repeat the question.
Uh, staff, I think you just had it up. It's the multicolored zoning map for the current zoning in the area. Yeah. The, the light blue area, is that ETJ or is that?
Yes, that's ETJ.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? No more questions. Can you get a motion to close public hearing number one?
I move to close the public hearing on item one.
I have a motion by Commissioner Stetson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Neela, all in favor? Oppose? Moving on, public hearing number two. Conduct a public hearing on rezoning application for one lot on 2.74 acres more or less and being TCAP personnel 711105, also known as 19217 East Easy Jet Street, Mainor, Texas, from agriculture to N1 dash one light industrial. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioners. This is the actual one that John Sumlinson is here if needed to speak for.
Uh, yes, this item, the property was actually recently annexed into the city with the intention of being used for Lone Star Electric. They have a property immediately to the east across the street from this location and they intend to use it to expand their operations.
Any questions, Commissioners? If no questions, can receive a motion to close public hearing number two.
I'll make the motion to close.
I have a motion by Commissioner Meyer. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner. Sorry. Albert, all in favor? Oppose? Moving on. We do have a public comment from Mr. Robert Battey. I'm sorry, Battle.
Oh, sorry.
You better be careful or I'm gonna mispronounce your name. It's Pius, by the way.
Let me read it real quick, Mr. Battle, and I'll get you started. Conduct a public hearing on subdivision preliminary plat for Shadow Glen Phase Three, Section Three, beginning, three to eight, beginning 681 lots on 247.03 acres more or less also known as 14611 Foods Grove, Mainor, Texas. All right, Mr. Battle.
Uh, thank you, sir, and this is an interesting situation because here we have the site map. It's what, 600 some houses? I don't, there's no parkland. Where's the parkland? And I've asked Mr. Burrell, hopefully he can answer here in a second. How many houses times what amount? Like 550 per home or something times 681? Uh, or how many acres? It should be like, what, eight and a half acres they give us that's actually usable for parkland? Open space is not equal parkland. We figured that out a long time ago. So if you don't mind, Mr. Burrell, if you can tell us how much parkland fees, how much parkland in lieu fees, how much developer fees? I'd also like to point out elsewhere on their map, they have a little FEMA guide here. I gave you a copy as well. I used to spend a lot of time trying to find a parking lot for our secret park there. We have a 200 acre park at the end of Howdy Way there, that cul-de-sac. These three lots at the end have now been deemed to be in the 100 year flood plan. So they can't be built for a house, but they can be a parking lot for access to the One Mile Nature Trail. So that's something that you guys could do. You actually have a lot of power. You don't realize you're a commission cause you're still the vestigial organ of Scott Dunlop who thought he, that you were his personal committee. Okay, now we're trying to get out from underneath that realm of oversight. He was the censor. I couldn't send an email to you guys without it going through him and him putting comments on it. So hopefully, Mr. Burrell is not doing that. You guys have a very important job and we need you to, to uphold the quality of life for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. See you, staff.
Uh, yes, this is for Shadow Glen Phase Three Sections, three through eight. It's been reviewed for compliance by the engineers and to answer the question that was posed for the development agreement, there's a $250 per lot requirement for parking fee in lieu. So that's 681 by 250 that puts it at about 170,250 dollars, though that's not tied to the preliminary plat. That's assessed once we get to the final plat.
Any questions, Commissioners?
I'll save my questions for the business item related to this public hearing.
Any other questions? Can I take a motion to close a public hearing number three?
I move, we close the public hearing on item three.
I have a motion by Commissioner Stetson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Meyer, all in favor? Oppose? Moving on, consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the Planning and Zoning Commission and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items unless requested by a chairperson or a commissioner member in the, which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and consider a discussion, considered separate, sorry, be removed from the consent agenda and consider separately. Consider discussion and possible action to approve the minutes for October the 8th Planning and Zoning. October the 8th, 2025, Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Session.
I move that we approve consent agenda item number four.
I have a motion by Commissioner Neela. Do I have a second?
A second?
A second by Commissioner Stetson, all in favor? Oppose? Moving on, regular agenda. Consider discussion and possible action on a rezoning application for one lot on 2.78 acres more or less being TCAP personnel 236902, also known as 12725 US Highway 290, from agriculture to light industrial, city staff.
Uh, yes, this is the property just behind ASCO. I am available for questions or comments.
Um, can, staff, what are we considering for a buffer there since we have residential right next to that? And C3 seems pretty intense for what appears to maybe be like a 150 foot lot? 200 foot lot?
So it'll be dependent on the actual use. Uh, heavy commercial actually has more intense development standards than light industrial, but it's ultimately dependent on what's intended to go on the lot.
Oh, and we have a big list of restrictive considerations to consider, but, yeah, cause it's pretty much everything that you, it's like a kitchen sink commercial category or commercial zoning category. I'm just from a, from a planning perspective, you have while they're in the ETJ, they're still humans and they still live in homes on Katy Lane. And so I'm trying to keep in mind that they exist as humans, even though they're not in our jurisdiction. And then we have humans in houses that are about 100 feet or 200 feet down. So I'm trying to be mindful of like, if, if we are flum, our future land use map, sorry, I don't wanna use acronyms here before seven o'clock on a, on a Wednesday, but the future land use map that we just adopted two years ago anticipated that this commercial lot would eventually flip to a a more of a mixed use or more of a residential retail. I'm confused why we would go off of what's there today as our guiding principle with the, with the context of the people sleeping or doing whatever else they do in their home directly adjacent to this parcel that's currently agriculture. So that's, I'm trying to figure that out from a planning perspective, how even C3 is an appropriate use. So in this context.
Yes, when you're looking at the future land use map, the area that's currently designated, well, that ASCO and, forgive me for the name, it's not Anderson, who's next to them. That, that area is still already designated for commercial usage and it's very unlikely at any point that, you know, that changes. When looking at what's being requested versus what would ultimately be a more beneficial use for the community, staff essentially contemplated opportunity to allow the community to have a space that they can go to and utilize properly. Whereas if we went with industrial, it would just be more of the same. Whereas with the commercial designation, it still gives them that flexibility to do something potentially industrial, like say more equipment sales or things of that nature, but it also allows for, say, residential or flex space or more of a, as I mentioned earlier, community driven mindset.
Would the applicant be receptive to C1? That we see usually used in adjacent, in, in parcels that are directly adjacent to residential? Like what's going in at Longhorn State, like in front of the grass field? Or that's multifamily technically in front, behind it? Or what's going in right at Green, at Greenbury? In 290?
I believe the applicant is here. I don't think they filled out a card.
High applicant.
Yeah.
I'll call you a real name when I find it. But yeah, I'm Jeff, I can assure you Jeff Stetson. I'm trying, I'm just trying to figure out.
Sure.
Just take your name. My name, my name's Carson Byrd, by the way.
Thank you.
Um, I'm representing, my client is, uh, an investor who's, who's purchasing this property um, under, currently under contract on it. It's not closed, set to close next month. Um, but yeah, the, the intention here is really, you know, to do similar to what ASCO is, is doing in the front, um, which is, um, some kind of industrial use with outside storage. Um, typically a lighter, you know, we're, we're not doing manufacturing. Um, we're not doing kind of that heavier, uh, industrial, um, uses, but more of that kind of, you know, equipment sales, uh, heavy equipment rentals, um, that kind of thing. Um, and the intention is to do that because of, you know, you've got these three heavy equipment suppliers up front. It really makes sense. All those guys like to kind of be together. Um, my investor has really good relationships with some of these kind of higher end national, you know, what you'd consider like national credit, um, uh, equipment dealers, the Sunbelt Rentals, the, um, United Rentals, the guys of those world, and they all like to kind of be together. Um, and so the intention is to, is to do more of that. Um, no intention of adding any buildings or doing any kind of development plans in the, in the near future, just kind of improving what, what's currently there and, um, and bringing in one of those, one of those uses.
So essentially the intent upon closing of this deal that doesn't, hasn't closed yet is essentially expand, expand the blueprint that you, you see to the north of this parcel. It's like equipment sales and storage.
Correct, correct.
Mm-hmm. I find that fascinating that you guys are different from the gas company, the gas stations where they don't wanna be near it. Or they, well, I guess, you know, we have three grocery stores on three corners now. We have three gas stations on three corners. So I guess that is kind of a thing.
Right.
But, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, you would not be receptive to anything lesser than C3 though, cause that would not allow your use to proceed.
I think just, um, you know, it, it would need to include some kind of warehousing, um, use. And then, you know, the, the important thing is some kind of outside storage use, um, which, you know, we, we talked about the C3 zoning prior to this and I think that that would, you know, that would suffice um, as opposed to light industrial, but, um, I haven't really dove into lesser uses than C3, but, um, you know, if they, if they still, uh, allow for those uses, then I think we would be open to it.
Thank you.
This, so it's been a long time since I've been back there, but, uh, I know a lot of people that live right behind there and have been in this town longer than probably majority of us have been alive. But, uh, so what, I know Commissioner Stetson did talk about this, but the you are neighboring a community that I've always thought that was a part of Mainor, um, that is right there. Um, you are basically their backyard, so.
Yeah.
Um, I know that building is already there. I, I think at one time it was a bus station or a bus depot or something like that. I think so. I, I could be wrong. But, um, I guess just knowing those things and knowing you're gonna be back there to homes that I've been here for a good bit. The noise, the equipment, all of that stuff, what does that do for the community? And stuff like that. I guess that's my question.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think that like, you look at where these guys are, are, you know, typically located, which is along, you know, front edge. You, you can see your Sunbelt Rentals, United Rentals. Usually they're actually in pretty heavy density areas. Um, a lot of retail, sometimes backed up to residential. Um, they're, they kind of have more of like a retail-y almost aspect to it while they are in industrial use. Um, and so, you know, I think, I think that just these, you know, these companies in general that these guys typically, uh, work with are, are kind of used to being around heavier density, uh, um, areas and, um, and, and seem, you know, at least historically speaking, to work well um, with them. You know, we're not planning on putting up a 20,000 square foot manufacturing facility or something like that, that would obviously have more of those concerns, but yeah.
If I may jump in, there's also the requirement for a, if it's industrial light, 50 foot, setback to residential and then C3 as a 40 foot with an additional buffer yard that sits within there. It's trees and shrubs.
Okay. As well as an O.P. So C3 record, C3 adds the additional buffer?
Both have a buffer yard.
Oh, both? Can you restate the buffers that you just stated?
So industrial light has a minimum of a 50 foot side rear setback to residential, but it also has a 40 foot buffer yard.
Okay.
Then C3 has a 40 foot side rear setback and it also has a 30 foot buffer yard.
Okay. Okay, 30 foot buffer yard, meaning a 30 foot vegetation easement versus a 10 foot vegetation easement in IAN 1?
Yes.
Okay. Staff, does this qualify as construction and equipment sales minor? Construction equipment sales major? Or something else?
That would ultimately be up to the applicant because as you stated tonight and also in their letter of intent, they don't have an exact use pinned out, just an idea.
Well, I'm then why are we here? I came, I came to work today to figure this out, but I'm, I'm not.
They're getting the zoning, they're requesting the zoning so they know what they're capable of doing.
Yeah.
That will determine what the use in the end is.
Well, they could have a pet store. That's probably all working out limits of two. It's, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out how to square this very weird peg that we brought, that we got today. All right, so I'll ask another question, cause I have to be nice, cause my therapist says I have to be nice. Um, does this, does the, what does the future land use map anticipate north of this parcel?
It's still part of the commercial corridor. So your C2s, your C3s essentially as it exists.
C's?
Yes.
Okay. They are currently C3 just to the north?
No, they're industrial light.
They're industrial light.
They received that zoning before the comprehensive plan and the future land use map were put into place.
But the, but, but Destination 2050 sets it to?
Commercial.
Commercial?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Like C2, C3?
C2, C3 and under C3, they would still be able to operate as they currently exist.
Okay.
Because C3 allows for heavy equipment sales or minor equipment sales. They're both allowed under that umbrella.
Okay. Currently, is that heavy equipment sales in the north parcel that's happening on the IAN, on the grandfathered IAN zoning?
I wanna say yes.
Or is that minor?
They're heavy, cause they're pretty big.
It's heavy. Okay, that's, I'm trying to figure out if I can squeeze them down into C1 or C2. So, all right. That would not be an allowable use under C1 or C2. Thank you.
We have any more questions, Commissioners? If no more questions, is there a motion? If no more questions, is there a motion? For regular agenda number five?
I'd like to make the motion. I'd like to make the motion. For. Height number five to approve a zoning of C three heavy promotion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Meyer, do I have a second? Second. A second by Commissioner Neela, all in favor?
Oh, sorry. I'd like to make an amendment to this motion.
Can we do that?
You're the chair.
You've got a motion and a second on the table, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And then discussion of the motion. Is how it would usually fall in my virtuals of order, correct?
You would typically have more discussion after the motion.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioners, I would like to entertain a amendment to the motion on the floor. To restrict as allowable uses, adult oriented business, commercial off street parking, data center. Financial services, alternative, game room, truck stop or travel center, transportation terminal. Residential vehicle park, gas station limited, gasoline station full service. Uh, I don't know if I'm allowed to restrict that, but he says I can, uh, this is a staff recommendation, by the way. Um, boarding school, public school, private or parochial school, vehicle storage facility and private zoo. And I'll offer that as a friendly amendment, or if it's not considered friendly, I will request a mo- a vote on the amendment. These are the uses listed in the backup by staff.
So is this still considered under the motion that we have?
So he he's requesting an amendment and you would have to either accept it as a friendly amendment or. I'm sorry, say that again. Correct, or if if you don't want to accept it, then you could proceed with a motion and vote, but right now you're requesting a friendly amendment, as I understand it.
Friendly amendment first, and I'll go, I I get unfriendly as it goes on, yeah.
Start start off friendly then.
Can you repeat the conditions?
Uh, the restricted uses would be adult oriented business, commercial off street parking, data center. Financial services, alternative, game room, truck stop or travel center, transportation terminal. Recreational vehicle park, gasoline station limited, gasoline station full service. School boarding, school public, school private or parochial, vehicle storage facility and zoo private, these are in the grid in the backup for staff.
Just clarification on that, so you're still, you're still supportive of the C three, moving to the C three zoning with those. Uh, removing those allowable uses, as you stated twice now.
I haven't voted on this main motion yet, or the amendment motion either.
But that's still your.
That would be my intention.
Right.
I'll accept the conditions uh for an amendment.
That's right.
So I have a motion for the amendment by Commissioner Myers, do I have a second, is that correct? Do we? Okay, so we're just, okay. So we're still carrying on with the, okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Meyer, a second by Commissioner Lita with the friendly amendment added to it. All in favor? Oppose? Motion passes. Moving on, regular. Consider, regular. Agenda, consider discussion and possible action on. Rezoning application for one lot on two point seven four acres more or less and being. TCAD Brazil, seven one 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 zero five, also known as one nine two one seven Easy Jet Street. Maynor, Texas, from agriculture to in one light industrial. Uh Commissioners, we do have uh John Zos in here if needed for. Um, any questions, city staff?
Uh, yes, this is the, I mentioned earlier, that is directly adjacent to Homestar Electric, this lot was annexed into the city with the intention of having it rezoned to industrial lights to expand their operations. This all sits within the Maynor Commercial Park, which is an industrial designated area.
I'm sorry, real quick, where is this located at again?
Maynor Commercial Park.
Maynor Commercial Park, so if you're, say you're coming down Beltex. Off of two ninety, if you make that left, that's Easy Jet Street, it's that warehouse area over there.
Alright, thank you.
Staff, do you know in this, oh wait. I already know in this property is annexed because you just said it was just annexed. Is it gonna be generating? Any revenue?
Likely not, they intend to use it for. Storage of their additional materials.
We have any more questions Commissioners?
I have a question, uh, so the future land use uh map. Is I N in line with that, or are we more in a commercial area?
That falls in line with that, this area is indicated as more of an employment center, so your warehouse, office parks, things of that nature, to have. High capacity for more employees.
Any other questions Commissioners? If no further questions, then we're gonna get a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Adler. Do I have a second?
Albert.
Albert, sorry, sorry about that.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioners Stetson, all in favor? Oppose? Motion passes. Moving on. Consider discussion and possible action on subdivision preliminary plat for Shadow Glen Phase Three. Section three through eight being six hundred and eighty one lots on twen- two hundred and forty seven point zero three acres more or less. And being TCAD Brazil. Two four eight zero two nine five four seven three four six eight zero four five three seven eight zero four. Five three five eight one five five nine six, also known more or less. I'm sorry, also known as one four six one one Fools Grove. Commissioners, we do have Brandon Hayman here for any questions.
Staff, I have a question for staff.
Hmm.
Um, probably for Ms. Gray, um. It's, I'm back to Atlas fourteen life. Is, what's shown on here, is that Atlas fourteen is the currently adopted uh floodplain for FEMA? Or is that floodplain with engineering expectate or anticipated changes based on engineering design of the area?
Um, the designer thing was based on Atlas fourteen.
Okay.
Um, uh typically for preliminary plats, they don't show like the FEMA floodplain, but on the plats it would. And it would still be labeled the one hundred year FEMA floodplain until Atlas fourteen is accepted. Um, but um, no, they've they've done Atlas fourteen because they're actually working on a bridge.
Okay, so FEMA, because I saw the, I see the FEMA. Line and it's right there next to it, I'm sure it's gonna be those wrought iron fences along the drainage easement. So I'm just on the northeast side of the property, like right there, we're kind of like.
They're they're actually.
Nudges.
They're gonna submit a. I can't remember if it was a clumer or a loomer to FEMA to take stuff out of the floodplain. Um, and that is required, um, they're working with Travis County because um there's a development agreement, so the city reviews. The preliminaries for Shadow Glen, all the stuff for Shadow Glen, but so does Travis County.
Uh huh.
So this is already gone right to Commissioners Court in Travis County and has been approved. Um, so the next step was for Maynor to approve the preliminary plan.
Okay.
So it it's like a joint review, um, and as you know, Travis County's got pretty strict rules when it comes to floodplain and.
Yeah. I was there in twenty thirteen, not there, but. Alright, thank you, so I, you, this, this conforms to. Are obviously it's non discretionary and you have a, you have a letter in the backup stating that this conforms to our.
Yes, it it follows all of the city amenity ordinance requirements for preliminary plots.
And lots forty through or thirty nine, thirty eight through forty three are going to be fine. Should be fine.
Yes, um, they're actually, when they get to that phase of the development, they're gonna, it's gonna be what they did in. Phase two where those are developed last.
Okay.
Um, because those take a little bit more work because you have to go through FEMA and whatnot, so.
And you have to carry insurance for your. Lots until they come out of the floodplain officially.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Alright, thank you. Staff, do you want to talk about the open space or versus the P and L?
So since there's not, of course, parkment shown on the plat, as I mentioned before. Shadow Glen has a very old development agreement that has certain. Items that they set into place, one of those being the two hundred and fifty dollars per lot, and with this being. Excuse me, six hundred and eighty one lots, if my math doesn't fail me, that would be about a hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, that would be for. Phase three sections three to eight.
The amenity center there in phase three though will not be pub, it's not a publicly, public park land, it's just a private amenity center for the residents of the HOA.
Correct, they're considered commercial lots, but it is primarily for the residents of this specific portion of the subdivision.
It'll have like limited access, okay, thank you.
We have any more questions Commissioners?
I have a question.
Yes.
You might have to scroll me a little bit on what was in that development agreement, as I've never looked at it directly, but um. Can we talk a little bit about what sort of traffic impact analysis might have been done either by us or Travis County? Um, for the these phases specifically?
Pauline, or we do have the actual engineers here as well, perfectly to a further.
Just, we just need you to state your name.
Sure, um, Brandon Hammond with Meredith Jones, I'm not the engineer, so uh KT Civil is our applicant, but unfortunately, um. Peggy, who's with KT Civil, she had a private uh personal issue that she couldn't be here tonight. So as far as the TIA goes, yeah, we've already had a TIA done, it was approved back in, I think, late twenty two, early twenty three. So we have a phased agreement in place, there's mitigation measures that we'll have to construct as part of that approved TIA. Uh, but yeah, this has already been vetted by Travis County years.
That was a TIA that Travis County had done in.
Yes, sir.
Twenty two, twenty three sometime there.
Yeah.
Okay, and that was for this phase or that was for the entire development?
Yeah, it's for sections three through eight. And just a point of clarification, um, this is a revision to a previously approved preliminary plan. Just want to make sure that's clear, that there's some bubble changes on here. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this was approved by the county and the city, I think it was late twenty four, Pauline? Late twenty four. So.
Yeah.
So just want to provide that clarification for the commission.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Commissioner Albert, for your reference, it's the scalloped area there in section three A. Um, and then the little scalloped areas there in the lower right of the plat.
Got you, thanks.
Alright, Commissioners, any more questions? May I obtain a motion?
I like the motion that we have approved this time.
I have a motion by Commissioner Meyer, do I have a second? Second, second by Commissioner Terry, all in favor? Oppose? Moving on, number eight, consider discussion and possible action. To remove heritage trees in Maynor Down Industrial Project being a twenty nine. Inch. Twenty nine inch pecan tree. Identified as number five zero one nine in the tree survey for said project. And being located at eight nine one six Hill Lane, Maynor, Texas. Uh, Commissioners, we do have. Tim Craftston and Michael Corn here for if we need questions answered. City staff.
Uh, yes, this item was at last month's P and Z meeting, but was recommended for postponement by Commissioner Meyer to. Give the applicant opportunity to come back and kind of show a bit of a due diligence they completed that. Brought them to the conclusion that the tree in question cannot be preserved or relocated. So they are here to. Yes.
Can we hear Meyer cannot be vet for?
Um, my name's Maggie Carion and I'm with Bowman, um, do you guys have the constraints map exhibit? Okay, yes. Okay, so we created this constraints map exhibit, um, to show you all of the existing utilities. Uh, proposed utilities, um, easements that require us to put the pond where it is, so. Um, the major constraint here is these four existing Atmos gas lines, which takes up a huge chunk. Of the eastern side of the site, um, so our buildings are graded such that drainage. Flows away from the building either to the east or west side, um, so on the. Western side, um, our drainage goes to this pond that discharges to a culvert here. And then similarly here, we have a network of um drainage pipes that discharge to this pond. Which ultimately um discharges over here to this culvert. So um drainage is naturally at the lowest spot on the site, which is where we propose our pond. And if we were to put our pond anywhere else, um, here, we couldn't because of all the hatched areas, there's roadways, um. We have a. Manville water line that crosses here, we also have a force main, so this green hatch wastewater line crossing. Um, we also have a gas line in this blue hatch. Um, and these roadways here that connect to the subdivision construction plans here.
So if I'm correct, that big circle on the bottom is the pecan tree, is that correct? Tree ID five zero one nine, the twenty nine inch pecan tree.
That is correct.
And it is, and that I'm assuming is an easement right there, is that correct?
So it's shown in the middle of the detention pond and we sized the um detention pond and it's. It takes up actually as much space as it can without encroaching on the the gas easement there. Um, because there, this is a big site, so it requires a lot of detention, so it's shown in the in the middle of the detention pond.
I have a question, uh. Which one came first, uh, the tree survey or the plan on where the buildings were gonna go? I mean, which one came first, did you? Do the building plan first and then do the tree survey?
Uh, the tree survey was first, it was done in twenty twenty one, um, and then the building plan has been modified over the years. So this is the latest building plan, but the tree survey was first.
So they could have arranged the trees, I'm not trees, but the buildings uh differently to. Work around the the tree sits, you already knew the tree existed. Work around the, the tree sits, you already knew the tree existed.
Um, so previously the site was located in Travis County. Um, City of Austin ETJ and they didn't have any tree regulations in the City of Austin ETJ. So that is why the building layout is how it is.
But, hold on, you're saying that the City of Austin's tree regulations did not extend beyond their city limits?
So in the ETJ, they did not have.
They don't have, they don't have jurisdiction in the ETJ. Okay. Uh, only for limited purpose, thank you. Is. I'm thinking of the no higher, no wider. Um, I'm wondering, is, there's no way to do a no deeper, no thinner? Drainage easement in that area?
No, so like I had mentioned, this is a hundred forty-six acre site with even more acres.
I'm not talking about a hundred forty-six acres ma'am, we're gonna stay confined to the little magenta corner in the bottom right. Where the big red dot is, there's no way to make that polygon smaller by like. Intensifying the drainage facilities in that, in that section?
No, it was required to be that large to detain the amount of water coming through.
Because of all the impervious cover on the site?
Um, yeah, actually, we had to assume. Fully developed conditions upstream according to the drainage criteria manual, so that actually added a lot of flow. Coming out into our site because there's a whole upstream areas that are flowing down um. To this point, so considering off-site, fully developed conditions, um, that added flows.
Could uh, could the, this lot have been swapped out with the lot uh, that was, is proposed for Parkland?
So in the development agreement, we proposed the lot on Site Plan A as Parkland, so that's per the development agreement. Um, lots seven, I believe, on site plan A is the Parkland lot.
Okay, so the, the answer is it could be, but because of the way it was agreed on. Previously that you're not willing to.
Well, also these lots are much different in size. Um, the lot. On site plan A is about nine acres and this lot is probably closer to forty. Um, so they're very different sizes.
Ma'am, we subdivided this parcel for you. Am, am I correct? Was this a, this is the single parcel that came in and was subdivided by us? Within the last six months? Okay, so we created those lots on this dais within the last nine months. So I'm a little confused as to kind of the statement there. Uh, we're talking about, so let's talk about the demising, about the, the white box, the polygon at the bo- bottom left. What's the square footage of that versus lot seven? We're trying to figure out how to do a land swap to save you a million dollars and how to, how to.
We can't do a land swap because we don't, we can't take this and flip, you're saying to flip that over to where the Parkland area is?
Put that over the Parkland, you gave us the garbage lot or whatever, is that kind of what it is?
Oh, okay. We, we worked, okay.
Sorry.
Good evening, my name is Tim Craftson with Dolphin Industrial, we're the owner. And we're your partner in, in this, in this, in this development. Um, we're, we're partnering with the City of, of Maynard on this. When we first, and we're annexed into the city, so we're, you know, it's, it's not like we're outsiders here. We own C- City of Maynard property, and so the partnership piece is, when we came in and presented this. To the mayor and to council, we initially thought. Hey, here's our site plan, here's how we think we can make this development work. And if we can't get a certain amount of square footage, we can't get a certain amount of buildings. We, we can't even, we can't even make it work, so that kind of goes to feasibility, so is it, is it feasible, of course, you know? Feasibility is like, well, could you make everything gold-plated? It's like at some point, it, you know, it's, it's cost too much, so at some point. Losing a building or losing significant square footage in a building, the development doesn't become feasible anymore, so in order to. Do this project alongside the City of Maynard, we initially thought that we could dedicate. We said, hey, we, we think we have five acres over here that fits, that we can, that we can dedicate for Parkland. Once we got to the end of this process, so that's what we initially promised and came up with, that council uh, was agreeable to. We finished at right about nine acres, so we almost doubled what we originally said that we would be able to dedicate for Parkland. No, we're not giving scrub area, we're giving the area that's actually closest to the city. It's gonna be actually the flattest. Um, it's gonna, it's gonna have drainage already taken care of for it. Um, so no, you can't, you can't take a forty acre uh, you know, parcel and fit it into a nine acre parcel. No, we can't, we can't do that.
Mr. Burrell, do you know the square footage? Cause I'm having a hard time seeing the screen and I, I, I. I guess I can pull it up on the backup. Do you know the square footage of the building in the bottom left corner?
It's two something?
Two acres?
No, two hundred and something thousand square feet.
Looks to be about two hundred and forty-eight thousand.
Two forty, two fifty?
Okay, so we're talking five acres. Is that correct?
Uh, whatever that math works out to.
Does anybody know it's forty thousand square feet in a, in an acre?
Forty-three, five sixty divided by, yeah.
Times, okay, perfect. So we're talking, yeah. Five, six acres, five and a half acres here. That's what we're trying to figure out is not taking into account the forty. That's why we had a, that's why I was saying she's not listening to us, she's not answering the question we asked. We're not talking about the buil- the whole parcel.
Sure.
That didn't exist until a month ago anyway. We're talking about that exact building there on the bottom left, is that able to be? You're saying that it's not able to be used on the flat section of the, of the parcel? And just have us kind of.
You mean where the Parkland area is?
Yes, in the, in the area that's dedicated as, or set aside as Parkland possibly.
On a, on a nine acre site, we could m- maybe on that site, we could fit seventy-five thousand feet maybe? On that, on the piece of Parkland that we're, that we're dedicating.
Yeah.
So yeah, so we, we would be able to fit a building that's maybe a third the size of this building. So we would lose.
Is that because of?
Because of everything around it that has to make it work. You, it's not just this building. You've gotta have truck court, you gotta have drive aisles, you gotta have parking.
Yeah.
You gotta have detention, all of those things. So we need this acreage for this building.
Correct.
Versus if it was the Parkland area, it's probably more like this, is what we, what we would have.
Okay. And you would not proceed if that was the case?
I'm sorry, would not.
You would not proceed with this, of this, they would, it would make it very difficult for this to pencil.
Yeah, it would be cri- it would be crippling to us.
Thank you.
Yeah. There's a few other just kind of data points I'd like to go ahead and, and get out there for, for the group. A few of the benefits and I think the partnership that we've all already agreed on since we've been annexed and. You know, we've had our site plan approved and that, that sort of thing, um, by council. I'll rattle through these quickly. Economic benefit, it's a net plus twenty-five million dollars to this, to the City of Maynard. We, we do get a little bit of tax relief because when we annexed into Maynard, just so everybody knows, when we annexed in. We took on Maynard's tax. When we were in Austin, in Austin's ETJ in Travis County. We didn't have that tax at all, so that's just a new tax that comes on to us. We have competitors that are literally next door to us. That are in the Austin ETJ that do have zero Maynard tax, and so the, the economic benefit that we got. Was so that we could compete at least long enough, three to five years. With those folks that weren't paying that tax on lease rates, so we could just have an apples-to-apples lease rate. So we get some benefit for that, which seems extremely fair to me. Plus, Maynard gets plus twenty-five in that equation, and that equation didn't include any calculations for. Jobs that this would bring for various reasons, so that's not even factored in. So economic benefit, Parkland dedication already covered. We originally started at five, we got to, we got to right about nine. Safety and revitalization, you know, you guys have heard the, the broken window theory, you know, when, when they would fix broken windows. In areas of town, that area of town, it got safer, rising tide lifts, lifts all boats. New roads, we're building millions of dollars of new roads that's gonna benefit. It's not, they're not private roads. They're public roads and most of what we're gonna build is actually north of this site that runs through a piece of property up here. It goes, it goes north and then it goes um, west on Howard Lane to, to one thirty. So millions of dollars of roads there that will ultimately relieve traffic on, on Greg Manor. Once that connects all the way through, it'll be a thoroughfare that the public will absolutely be able to use down through Hill Lane. Um, and then I would say last but not least here, a significant environmental benefit that we're bringing. We have um, poor quality uh, drainage on this site. It, it, it doesn't drain well. We have invasive plant species and basically what those do is they, they grow fast and they grow big and they clog up drainage. Which is why we have poor drainage on the site. And then on environmental benefit, we, we not only have those benefits, we're bringing tremendous tree benefit. Right now, um, let me look at my stats, uh, hundred and. Hundred ninety-two of the two hundred and forty-four trees that are currently on the site. Don't require any mitig- any, any mitigation at all for removal because they're not on Maynard's preferred planting list, they aren't large enough or both. Um, so for everything that does require mitigation, we're mitigating, so if it requires a three X or a five X. So if you've got a tree that, that falls under the mitigation category in the code, says, hey, this tree, you gotta mitigate for this if you're gonna take it out. It's either three times the diameter of the tree or five times the diameter of the tree, depending on how big it is, what kind of tree it is. We're doing that, that's, that's all been accounted for. Additionally, we're of course meeting code on any other trees that are required in addition to the mitigation. Only twenty-five of the two hundred and forty-four trees currently on the site are currently on Maynard's preferred planting list. Only twenty-five of the trees. Um, we are planting one thousand, as, as the, of the site plan that's currently submitted, we're, we're planting. One thousand four hundred and forty-four trees on this site. All one thousand four hundred and forty-four trees on this site are on Maynard's preferred planting list. So we're gonna go from twenty-five trees that Maynard likes to one thousand four hundred and forty-four on this site. Um, tree health, we haven't had an arborist study done on these two hundred and forty-four trees. Typically, we'll only do that if we think that there's gonna be a tree problem, so we can show health of the trees. We didn't do that because we didn't think there was gonna be a tree problem. We were able to mitigate. For, for all two hundred and forty-four, we were able to figure it out for every single one of them but one. If we could levitate this tree in the air and it wasn't in the low spot, we would do it, we just, we just can't. Um, we've, we've done it where we can other places. I think there's thirty-five trees out of the two forty-four that we are saving, that we aren't touching. So it wasn't zero, it's about fifteen percent. I wish it was more in a development like this. It is what it is. But we're following the code and mitigating for it. We're doing what, what the code says, says we should do. We just have this one. That we have constraints that are extraordinary. Um, but if we went, if we did an arborist study. So every single one of these two hundred and forty-four, as we're mitigating, we're, we're doing full mitigation, three times, five times. We're, we're paying full price, full boat, we're doing full landscaping as if all two hundred and forty-four of those trees were in perfect health. Well, the reality is, is that we all know that they're, they're not all in perfect health because the, the density of trees is so low per acre. Um, two hundred and forty-four trees over a hundred and forty-seven acres, you can do the math, a tree and a half per acre or something like that. They're exposed to wind, sun, rain, more than they would be if they're in a forest, so it's likely that. It's upwards of twenty-five percent of the trees that we have out there are dead or dying. Yet we're mitigating and replacing as if they're all in perfectly good health. So not only are we adding one thousand four hundred and forty-four trees as our, as of our current submittal that we have into the city. Uh, we're assuming they're all in great health and they're not. Um, so we're exceeding, we're exceeding there. Um, a couple more things and I'll, and I'll stop. So I, I think that's, that's probably it. I would just end by saying we've worked really hard over the last four years. We spent millions of dollars to get to this point. We feel like we're a good partner, we feel like we've, we're bringing a tremendous benefit. To the city and we feel like the cities agree with us. Um, that's, that's why we're here. We need your help on a couple of things. This is one. Um, we need help on, I feel like we've, we've more than accounted for it, and if there's something that we could reasonably do, we would do it. Um, and as we have in every other uh, case, here's another, for instance, we're required nine hundred and thirteen thousand square feet. By code of landscape area. We are providing, uh, let me get this number right, I think it's over two point five. Million square feet. It's, it's something like two hundred and seventy-three percent of what we're required by code to provide on landscaping. So there's another environmental benefit that we're bringing that we don't have to bring. We don't have to provide almost three X the landscaping that we're required. But we are. Um, so. I'll, I'll, I'll stop there and, and be happy to answer questions if anybody has.
Mister Tim, I do have a question. Uh, you did talk about upgrading roads. Um, what is the upgrading for Hill Lane even? I mean, that's the million dollar.
That's a great question. So our, our TIA was for this road right here. Um, this is the road that extends up to the north and then goes over to the west. This is Howard up here, goes to the west on Howard and connects into one thirty over here. Um, so we are building in an RTI, our original TIA with Travis County. We committed to build this part of this road right here. And then there's a Austin, and there's an AWU sanitary sewer project that's taken years to come to fruition. I don't know if y'all have been involved at all in that or not, but we actually put it together. And then by a complicated confluence of events, we, we couldn't be a part of it. Um, but we've granted easements for it. That project is, is improving Hill Lane to like. It's hard, it's hard to show on the site plan because it doesn't show, but it's, it's improving it. Almost to our property line, not quite. So that project won't, so it'll be fully improved, not quite to our property. And then this uh, is a, is a single family for rent developer down here called Good and West. And they are closing, they are part of the group that's gonna use that sewer line that's coming in. They are closing. Um, I think later this week on that piece of property. Good and West has it in their TIA to finish the rest of Hill Lane. So when they develop, they'll finish the rest of Hill Lane. So our plan. Cause we don't, we can't count on exactly when they're developed, the, the fact that they're closing is, is really good news. But our plan is we're gonna build this and we have an agreement with this property owner to be able to build this road up here. We're gonna build this and then we're gonna build this at the same time and we'll be connected all the way into one thirty. And then just as soon as Hill Lane can get, you know, improved per the TIA that Travis County has for this landowner, we'll be all about it. But the sanitary sewer project that's gonna, that's gonna improve the road most of the way to our property boundary. That's starting, we think, um, early Q two of next year and should be a nine to twelve month project. So it'll be, if you think of Hill Lane, you know, as a whole, three quarters of it should be done. Fifteen months from now or something like that, and then the rest of it will be done once Good and West completes their TIA here.
Well, and, and I think my question is kn- knowing Hill Lane and being a. Person that goes through the church that's on Hill Lane, um, understanding that this does take large vehicles to. To do and for some of us that come from the toll road on, I think it's Greg Maynard back there that is. Like you need a four by four to drive.
It's crazy, yeah, it, it's gonna be.
How, how are we going to make sure that people live in those apartments? Go to church there, even the school. How does Hill Lane not turn into that, almost Grand Canyon looking like that? So that we could be able to get this done if, if you understand what I'm saying.
Well, I mean, it's gonna be brand new, uh, the road's gonna be constructed, you know, per, where it's the City of Maynard Road, per City of Maynard standards. And where it's Travis County Road, per Travis County and, and or Tex- dot standards. Um, it'll, it'll go from, I can't remember what the right of way is right now. I think it's gonna go to a sixty-two foot or a sixty-seven foot right of way. Oh, Pauline probably knows what the right of way is. Sixty-four. Uh, do you know what it is now? Do you know what the, what the right of way width is now? It's gonna get wider, nicer, better, should be brand new, and it shouldn't be, I think there was an overlay done. Not that long ago by the city to kind of put a Band-Aid on it and it won't be that situation. Not that long ago by the city to kind of put a Band-Aid on it, and it won't be that situation, it'll be a full depth, you know?
That's the answer you just said right there, the Band-Aid, yeah, so, thank you, thank you for that.
Sure.
Commissioners, do we have any more questions? Thank you, Mister Tim.
Thank you.
If there's no more questions, Commissioners, can you get a motion?
On all you will, move to advance the staff recommendation to approve removal. Of the heritage tree of Maynor Downs Industrial Project, being a twenty-nine inch pecan tree identified as tree number. Five zero one nine of the tree survey for the project, and being located at eight nine one six Hill Lane at Maynor.
I have a motion by Commissioner Stetson, do I have a second?
I second.
Stack, second by Commissioner Aubrey.
Yeah, um. The reason for this motion i- is not because we enjoy putting people through the wringer over a single tree, but. But to kind of understand the context of the Jenga pieces of this puzzle of how to. How to get a project that has a lot of different parts to it together and move it forward and, and. Not have a, and, and, and to kind of ke- take a holistic approach of, of what are we getting from it versus what are we losing? And I know that, I don't have the historical background in this community as Mister Pizer. Or even Chair Chavis does, Vice Chair Chavis does, but, um, I value this community and its historical connection here, especially to this parcel. And its former uses, um, I do appreciate very much that there will now be. More than three thousand caliper inches added to the property, um, in, in addition to it, which is far. More significantly higher than it, than was there at the current state when it was planned for redevelopment. So that gives me some comfort, um, I'm on property that had no trees on it. Until my two little live oaks were planted within five feet of each other by my developer. And then I moved one to the backyard with a nice HOA approval as it was happening, as she drove by, um. But, um, so I understand that like a lot of our black land soil, it, it's hard to get good trees or trees that are. That we want to have or vegetation only wanna have in our community, um, and I'm hopeful that. We will have more than just a single tree that flourishes on this property, um, that can become a twenty-nine inch pecan or live oak. Or preferred tree, maybe not in the next fifteen years, but perhaps in the next fifty. Um, so I'm, that's why I support the removal of this one tree as much as I know this pains a lot of the people in our commission. So thank you, that's, sorry for putting everybody through the ring on this one, but thank you.
No more comments? All in favor? Oppose? Moving on. Consider discussion and possible action on the two thousand twenty-six subdivision calendar. Oh, the motion is a tie, doesn't pass, correct? Yeah, fails, yeah. I'm sorry about that, moving on, um, consider discussion and possible action on the two thousand twenty-six subdivision. Calendar.
Uh, yes, this is the subdivision calendar for next year, just indicating our subdivision, shot clock, P and Z. Dates, holidays, speaking of holidays, the Veterans Day for twenty twenty-six, our P and Z meeting falls on that. So if we could make a recommendation to move that.
I did see that one, I thought I saw another one. When, I guess city staff, what, would be the preferred?
They recommend the tenth.
The tenth?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the calendar.
I have a motion by Commissioner Meyer, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Terry, any comments to the motion? Any comments to motion, all in favor? Motion passes. I have, man. Have a motion to adjourn Planning and Zoning Commission meeting at seven forty-nine.
Hold on, I have a request for inquiry.
I, I guess I do have that too, uh, would that include the tenth?
You would have had to make the recommendation to. To move it to the tenth? Commissioners, I was one of the votes in favor, I move that we recall the.
Reconsider.
Pardon me, reconsider, oh, not recall, I move that we reconsider item ten, item nine.
I have a motion, is it a motion to reconsider? Oh, motion is to.
Reconsider item nine?
Item nine, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Terry, now we can.
All those.
All in favor? Oppose?
Oh. Alright, uh, Commissioners, I would like to consider, um, I'd like to reconsider, well, now that we've reconsidered. Item nine, I'd like to move that we approve the twenty twenty-six subdivision calendar. With a modified meeting date for the Planning and Zoning Commission to fall on Tuesday, November tenth. At six thirty PM in lieu of the originally, of the typically scheduled November eleventh meeting due to the holiday. Six thirty PM, on Tuesday, November tenth, twenty twenty-six.
I have a motion by Commissioner Stetson, do I have a second? Yes, sir.
Question to the motion?
No, sir.
Staff, do you wanna explain the backup?
No, it is.
That is indeed what it's already shown.
I was gonna say, never mind.
I think it was preemptively corrected.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it wasn't the backup.
To say, that's why I went ahead with it.
I'm sorry.
My apologies, we got a little ahead ourselves.
Well, now we're back, Commissioner Meyer, I apologize, but I still ask for your support of this revised motion, not the same motion, let me just pass. Alright, uh, no other questions for me.
Well, at least we know what time it'll be now, um, do I have a second to the motion? Second by Commissioner Terry, all in favor?
Oppose?
Motion passes.
I do have a problem, or, um, I guess it's a request for information from staff on. The, the action of item eight, if, upon failing. What happens to item eight, does it go to council with a recommendation of, with no recommendation, or does it? Doesn't it just, does it end with us?
So it, it ends here unless of course they reapply or there's an appeal.
Okay, and they, they can appeal, they have the right to appeal to the Board of Adjustment.
This would be appealed to council.
To council, thank you.
Is, so, I'm thinking I'm gonna ask a couple of clarifications, so this doesn't go to council since it ends here, is that correct?
It would only go to council if they make an appeal, or they could reapply, it would be brought back before you.
Planning and zoning commission is the decider of. We're the last stop for tip- typically for a tree. Uh, request.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Maintain a motion to adjourn Planning and Zoning meeting now at seven fifty-two.
So move.
I have a motion by Commissioner Stetson, a second. Second by Commissioner Auburn, all in favor? Oppose? No, and I, I looked at it and I was looking.